All right, I'd like to call this session of the Prattville Planning Commission to order. Madam Secretary, could you please call role?
Mary Calesby. Councilman Whiteside. Chairman Smith.
You.
Vice Chair Gardner. Chief Johnson. Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Heineman. Mr. McOllie. And Mr. Nelson.
Thank you. If you notice, we do have the minutes from the June sixteenth, twenty sixteen meeting. If you'd like to peruse them and then check it. They were not mailed out to us, but they are right here and if you would, somebody would check it out, make sure that is right and if I could get a motion to accept them as they are. All right, is there a second? Okay, all in favor? Raise your hand. Thank you. Thank you for coming. This is the Prattville Planning Commission. We're volunteers, the most of us, some of us are voluntold to be on here. But we're all here as citizens of Prattville to be representative of the people of Prattville. What we're gonna do next is we're going to have a public hearing on the zoning of from B one, general business, to T two. And I have a feeling that that might be what some of you are here for. And it is going to be a public hearing. Is the person that is requesting the zoning change here, Mr. Duke? Six forty-two, uh, six forty-two West Fourth Street. Would y'all like to tell us, just so everybody understands what's gonna go on, if somebody wanna be representative and tell us just briefly what's going, what's going on, just so people will understand? You can go ahead and sign in, just so we know who you are with, with Ms. Morgan. All right, you can speak into the microphone so everybody can hear you, please, sir.
Yes, what we're here today for is in reference to my-
Could you tell us, I'm sorry, but can you tell us who you are and your name?
Burl A. Rent.
Okay, Mr. A. Rent, thank you, go ahead.
Uh, what we're here for today is in reference to my mother-in-law. We're trying, her health is going down, we're trying to move her in. The easiest way to do it, she sold her house. What we're trying to do is get her over to the house and the easiest way to do that, she's independent, so we've decided to try to get a trailer of our own and put her in it behind our house.
Okay, okay, that's great. It is right there on your property on, on West Fourth Street. Okay. Any, any quick questions before we, all right? And, and this is, you're definitely for this particular event. Is there anybody else that wants to speak out for this particular, uh, putting the trailer here on the property? If you could, let us know who you are. And you can stay right there with your, your spouse. And tell us what, what-
Okay, I'm Judy Roseberry.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm the daughter of my mother there.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. What me and my sister were trying to do is get our mom close to us because her health is failing, so we could take care of her.
Okay.
But she doesn't wanna give up her independence.
Okay.
She wants her own little space. And if she does get a mobile home, it's gonna be a brand-new. It's not gonna be a used one.
Mm-hmm.
And that's just, you know, we're just gonna be there for her.
All right. And it's right there on your property.
'Cause I take her to the doctor, to her doctor's appointments and, you know, just care for her.
Okay.
And just make it easier on me if she's right there.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Thank you. All right, anybody else wanna speak for this? All right, if you'd sign in and let us know what you do.
How are y'all doing?
I'm well. Tell us who you are.
I am Peggy Wood. I'm the mother.
Yes, ma'am, that's what.
I do have failing health. I have been through thyroid cancer. I'm still going under the doctor. I have problems with my legs, which, that's the name of it, is nerve damage.
Yes, ma'am.
And I do fall.
Yes, ma'am.
And I have to call my family to come pick me up, if I don't call paramedics and I don't call paramedics.
Yeah, I understand.
Unless I have to.
Yes, ma'am.
But I have other problems with my health.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's why I want to be close to, may I be in front of me, one daughter be in front of me and one would be in the back.
Okay.
But I'm not planning on getting, uh, just a wore-out, ugly trailer.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know they're looking at this as a park. It is gonna be called a park, but it will not be. But my trailer added and it's just another trailer and another trailer just got storage in it.
Right, and so there are two trailers there now?
Yes, and it has been a trailer in this spot.
Right.
We have a paper here where the fire department had checked it out before. And, uh, it has been approved before that we have this trailer in there. This trailer has been moved out.
Okay.
But it hasn't been there.
Right, and there's been a trailer.
But it's not gonna be no junky trailers like we have beside us. And I know it's two trailers, uh, three behind us that people live in, so
Yes, ma'am.
So nobody would object to me being there.
I understand. I understand completely.
Thank y'all so much and God bless.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Is anybody else wanna speak for this? Okay. Now, this is an open forum where we will stay here and listen to everybody that wishes to speak. However, we have to have some sense of order and you can only speak to me. If you'd like to speak to somebody else, I will say, okay, you can talk to the mayor, but you direct your questions to the chairman. Would anybody like to come up here and talk against this proposal? Come on up in and sign, sign in and and address us and tell us who you are.
Hi, I'm Gladys Bailey and I live on Allenville Road.
Okay.
And I own six, seven, seven Allenville Road.
Yes, ma'am.
And the other property belongs to me and my two sisters.
Okay.
And I do have a double wide on that one property.
Yes, ma'am.
But now it's on three acres by itself.
Okay.
My house is on two acres.
All right, and you're on Allenville Road?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
And when I built onto my house, I had to jump through all kind of loops just to build onto it.
Yes, ma'am.
And we really got that end looking a whole lot better.
Yes, ma'am.
And that double wide is where two houses used to be that was run down.
Mm-hmm.
And we destroyed those, put that double wide there and everything.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm against this because there's already two trailers back there. And as far as I know, I had to get permits and all sorts of stuff to get the double wide there.
Okay.
And as far as I know, there was never any permits for those trailers that's already back there.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm afraid that if they put another one back there, it's just gonna be a complete trailer park.
Mm-hmm.
And like on my lot, I've got connections that I can put two more houses or mobile homes plus one or two of my daddy's property.
Yes, ma'am.
And I mean, I'm not gonna do that and I don't want anybody else doing that.
Okay.
But you know, if we're gonna have a trailer park, it's all have a trailer park, she kept saying.
Yes, ma'am, and you're on the, what's your address on Allenville Road?
Six, seven, seven Allenville Road.
Six, seven, seven, okay.
And my property goes all the way over to Fourth Street.
Goes to Fourth and it's your six, seven, I see it, okay.
And I know when my mom and my granddaddy was sick, Mr. Callaway was over to zoning.
Mm-hmm.
And I wanted to put a trailer down there on Miss A. Vance land and he was all against that.
Yes, ma'am.
And I mean, my granddaddy was bedridden and my mother was in a wheelchair.
Mm-hmm.
And I mean, I had to come from, uh, Sheila Boulevard all the way down there to help her and my other two sisters too. And I mean, I feel for them, but still, I'm against it, very much so.
Okay.
Because my husband was sick and I had to do the best I could.
Yes, ma'am.
That's just how I feel about it.
Okay. I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right, yes, sir. Tell us who you are and which is at six, seven, seven, okay.
Okay, I'm, uh, my name is L. White the second. I went to, uh, well, mostly you probably won't know who I am because when I, I graduated from Billingsley High School in nineteen ninety. I played on the, uh, the, the two, I know y'all remember Billingsley when they were the powerhouse, one A. School. I played on both of those, um, when we went back-to-back for the state championship and we only lost one game both years.
Okay.
So I was also, I played, uh, I played with Michael and them, um, you know, in the Coach Gerald Carter and Coach James Carter.
Okay.
And, uh, I went in the military for twenty-five years, eleven months and eleven days. My, my beautiful wife there, she's, um, retired military as well, twenty-eight years. And I bought the, uh, property on six twenty-one West Fourth Street.
Okay, six twenty-one, okay.
I'm right across the street.
Okay.
Now, I don't have a problem with the, not necessarily with the trailer being moved there, but I have a problem with you, um, rezoning it to a trailer park because then that degrades the value of all the properties around there to, to, um, you know, reduce it down to a trailer park.
Right.
Now, if it's just a trailer gonna be moved there, got it, but once you, once you rezone it to a trailer park, that mean that if they decide to put four, five, six more trailers there, then they can do, do so because now we made it a trailer zone.
Right, and, and you're concerned about the number of trailers that they would have there?
I, I just don't wanna be rezoned to a trailer park.
Okay.
You know, if they, if they, you know, I underst- I understand and I fought for this country. I've been deployed, you know, uh, four times in different, in different comeback situations, starting at Desert Storm. So I definitely don't wanna, um, you know, um, do anything to harm a fellow citizen when I, when I been shot at IED for, you know,
Yes, sir.
for a citizen. But however, the problem I have is to, is to actually changing the zone.
Okay.
Because then, you know, it'd be a wild, wild west show and everybody can just put a trailer wherever they wanna go.
No, not particularly.
You change it and therefore it, it, it's by by that and it's a trailer park.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I understand what you, what you're saying. All right. Any questions? Anything?
So is it possible that they can put the trailer there but not change the zone?
We will, we will discuss that with Mr. Duke. I will, uh, I will present that to him.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir, come on and sign in and tell us who you are. Hey, how are you?
Um, my name's James H. D. E. Y.
James Evie.
Oh, H. D. A. D. E. Y. I'm in on six oh four Allenville, I'm in on six oh five, I'm in on six oh five eight.
On Allenville?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay.
Then, uh, we got, we got a trailer park around me now and that trailer park goes in wood this big. You can't even see but an old trailer about there.
Yeah, the trailer?
And nobody been building it in about two liels.
Okay.
Line six oh five.
Okay.
Then, one, one one thing too, they be a grain, about, we live down forty-nine liel on the Allenville and same place.
Mm-hmm.
On fourth seat, they be a grain, don't talk fourth seat. They wanna pour down lane all day long. Got lot of them on my fourth seat.
Mm-hmm.
On my building, on my, on Allenville.
Okay.
Turn off that trailer park.
Mm-hmm.
So ain't anything been done.
And you're concerned about drainage onto, or if the trailer would be there, that, then there would be a change in the drainage?
Well, ain't been changed, we been, I've been that way, this, uh, draw a seal.
Yes.
Draw, draw a seal, trying to build a trailer park on this side and a long time ago then they bolted it down. They built the land that's too high.
Right.
There be a grain through that.
Okay, drain.
Ain't no grain nowhere.
Okay.
And Allenville on the end, we go down Allenville, go down to, when they building that park, had a grain on it, into the seat.
Yes.
Going down in wood. But ain't no grain.
Okay.
So when it land, that big ol' pipe going off on fourth seat, going on me. And you go to my fault like I said, six oh four, one's four down lane, they like fifth hole.
Okay. And you're concerned about the overall, that it would change the drainage or?
Certainly me messing that trailer park or a more lot will turn out on me.
But as far as them putting the trailer here?
I don't, I don't.
You're all right, but, but are you afraid that the drainage would change?
More.
Get more, more because the trailer would be there? Okay. Okay.
But then I don't know fifty liels.
Right. And so that would be something with, with the drainage? Okay, I understand what you're saying. All right. Okay. Okay. Any questions? Well, with that, anything? Okay.
Don't do talking about the grain down.
I will discuss that with Mr. Duke.
He come by one day.
Okay.
My land drawing-
Drawing the-
Bobby's called land.
Yeah, right.
My land drawing that trailer park.
Okay.
And my little land on this side, we got we didn't break. We're drawing a trailer park.
Okay. Well, well, that, that's a city engineer.
That trailer park from Miami.
Right, that, that'd be a robbery and, and I will, I will
Yeah.
I'll point that out to-
On up there.
Yeah.
I don't know what they did to it, they only on me too, going in both ways.
All right, well, I will, um, I will point that out to Mr. Anderson and, and let him know about that for you, okay? All right. That, thank you, sir. All right, if anybody else wants to speak for or against? Oh, I'll get you in just one second, but you can, you've already signed in, so you can come on.
Now, I know he's talking about a trailer park, but right beside my daughter's house, that's Cook's Trailer Park.
Right.
On down the road is called Squirrel Run.
Yes, ma'am, I know where that is.
All of them is right there. This land does not drink.
Right, I understand.
It does not drink.
Right, I understand.
So I just let y'all know, it's some more trailers around there.
Right.
And it's next to us.
Uh, I got you. I understand. All right. Anybody else wanna speak for or against? Yeah, I will get, but, and, all right, come on and sign in. Okay. We got pictures of them. Where it's going, okay.
My name's Joe Tucker. I live next door to where they want to put this trailer in at.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, I see no problem myself with the trailer going there. It's not wanting to change it to a trailer park, it's just to move one trailer in to help her.
Yes, sir.
So she'll be close to her loved ones.
Mm-hmm.
Won't be worried, they, they worry about her when she's too far away to get to them.
I understand.
Get her. But, uh, I say I'm right next door to it and there's trailers all around the place and I don't see where, I don't say we need to put, uh, change it to a trailer park.
Right.
But to have one trailer for hardship.
Yes.
Case.
Right. And, and the, the, I understand what you're saying. Thank you, sir. Absolutely. Absolutely. You can come on in and you can come on in and sign in and tell us who you are and, and ma'am, and we'll get here, this gentleman here and we'll get right to you. Hey, how are you, sir?
My name's Kenneth Roseberry.
Kenneth Roseberry, okay.
Husband to her oldest daughter.
Yes, sir.
That came up and spoke and really the room that's there wouldn't allow a bunch of trailers as far as, you know, you got to have so much distance between them.
Sir, would you speak into the mic more?
Yeah, speak into the microphone.
Oh, as far as these people, you know, worry about it becoming a trailer park, the area don't allow the room 'cause you got to have so much space between them and everything.
Right.
And I just wanted to get that point in.
I understand. A lot of times in a grand-
Can't be a whole bunch put in.
Right, right. I understand. Thank you, sir. All right. If anybody else wanna speak for or against, come on and tell us who you are and-
Hello, how are y'all doing?
Doing well.
I am Lenore White. That's my husband, L. White, over there. We live on, um, six twenty-one West Fourth Street. And we, the only thing that we actually have an issue with not supporting my husband is changing the zone.
Yes, ma'am.
When we change it from one zone to another zone, that allows you to get the opportunity to actually put more trailers 'cause it says mobile home park, what you're changing it to.
Right.
So that's the only issue we have as far as them moving one trailer for the mom being closer.
Yes, ma'am.
We have no problem with that, but then that would bring down the property value.
Right.
If they turn it into a mobile home.
And, and the, the, um, it'd be putting a trailer back that was there and, and it is a land. I've seen the property and, and been around for, and I know where y'all live too. Um, but I it's landlocked as far as how many, this would be the only one that would be able to get there. It's just, for instance, if it was a, if they were building a stick house there, we would say it would, it was a subdivision because you're subdividing the property and it wouldn't be a subdivision, it's just the fact we're subdividing it. And it's the same, same basic principle, we're calling it, they're gonna call it a trailer park, but there's, there's four slots there for trailers or three slots for trailers now and, uh, it's hooked for three trailers. And so they're replacing one, but since we're structured now in the city of Prattville, or we try to be more so than what it was years ago, um, we have to go through this process for them to put the, the manufactured home back where it was. But it wouldn't be more than the, the, the house and the other, other three trailers. It's, it's, it's not enough room there to put anymore from what I understand. And I'll, I'll discuss that with Mr. Duke. I am going to ask that question to him when it gets his turn to, to speak. But yes, ma'am, it would just be putting one other there that, in, um, in, in replacement of one that was there previous, in previous years.
So when you do that, do you have to change the zoning from the general business to mobile home park?
Correct. Right now, it's, it's, I take it it's general business and, and people are living there. Okay. I'll, I'll discuss that with Mr. Duke. But yes, ma'am, but we would have to change the zone. In order for her to live there, we're gonna have to change the zoning, uh, from vandal, from business to, to, um, T four, T, T, to a trailer park. T two, excuse me, T two.
So I have a question for the committee.
Yes, ma'am.
If that was, you were living across from someone that wants to put a additional trailer or rezone the property, how would you feel about that?
It would depend on if there was already trailers there or not. On my particular case, if it's replacing ones that have, have been there for the last twenty-five to thirty years, it, it, it would, that would be something that I would have to take into consideration. Okay?
That's all I have.
Yes, ma'am. Anybody else speak for or against? Yes, ma'am, if you'd like to readdress us, come on. Oh, no, ma'am, you don't need to sign in again. I think Ms. Morgan will note that you came back. She knows, she knows you.
I'll have to sign in again.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Now, Mr. Tucker or Turner, he lives next door to that tra- that house.
Yes, ma'am.
Those trailers on that back lot, right there next to this double wide that I own.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. And when I've got that double wide, they had to know who owned the property.
Yes, ma'am.
Like, do we know who owns this property? Who the property's name's in?
This property here? Yes, ma'am. They, they're here with us today.
Okay. But like I said, is, does it own, belong to just one person?
Uh, at this time, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Because at that time, me and my two sisters, they had to sign saying that that spot, we put that double wide in, when we split it up, it will be mine because the double wide's mine.
Right.
And like I said, I am thoroughly against y'all putting more trailers there.
Okay.
Because if they moved a trailer, they illegally moved it also. 'Cause they told me that as you move one in or out, you still gotta get permits.
Right.
And as far as I know, there's never been any permits until I started with my house and I started building up there in two thousand and one.
Okay.
Um, I went to my house, 'cause y'all said my house was in a business district instead of residential.
Right.
And I grew up up there, right next to work.
Mm-hmm.
It was never business.
Yes, ma'am.
But like I said, I just don't want more trailers there 'cause it's depreciating my house.
Yes, ma'am.
And I didn't spend ten cents on my house. I've got a lot of money invested in my house.
Okay.
And I mean, if you're gonna start doing that, I may think about putting some more trailers up there on my property.
Well, we would, and we would, we would, you can come before us and-
I can move in, you know? And I've got sick relatives.
Yes, ma'am. And if you did that, then you would, you would, you would need to come before us there too.
And like I said, I know the people that's sick and I, it's still, why can't they move in with somebody, you know?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wants to speak for or against? Yes, sir. Come on. Yes. Yes, Kenneth. Ms. Roseberry.
Our trailer, when it was moved in, was set on a, a pre-existing place, but
Right.
we did get permit through the city.
Okay.
And it was inspected for the tie-down and all before we had the under-pending put around it.
Yes, sir.
Skirting. And then also, uh, Mr. Paul May was the electrical inspector at the time.
Yes.
Came out and had to approve it before we could, you know, get the power turned on.
Yes, sir.
And the sticker put on it and everything.
Okay.
So I wanna clarify that, that, yeah, we did have to go through the process.
Okay. That's a, met the codes, I guess. All right. Um, sure.
Yeah, needs to begin the mic.
Come on, come on up here and, and, and you can address us another time, absolutely.
I went down there when I got my certified letter and I talked to Mr. Duke myself.
Yes, ma'am.
And at the time I talked to him, which was about two weeks ago, he could not find any permits where any mobile homes was ever moved down there.
Okay. I'll, I won't, all right, we'll, we are going to talk to Mr. Duke when he, when we, when we come in. Thank you. Okay. Yeah, okay, we'll, we'll, we'll get that, we'll, we'll talk to Mr. Duke and say-
They had every paper that we had.
Yes, ma'am.
We took the permit that the trailer was moved out, they had one.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, and I see that.
So everything is, was in place, we talked to Duke, we talked to George, and this is why we here now.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else? Okay. The, now, when I say that the when I, when I, we're, we're not, nobody leave, but when I say that the, that the, uh, public hearing portion of this meeting is closed, that means that nobody else is gonna talk except for Mr. Duke. And, uh, Mr. Duke? Would you like to tell us the city's opinion of this situation?
Yes, sir, let's, um, let's start with some background.
Yes, sir, please.
As much as I can fill in. We'll talk about what, what we know about the area as far as-
All right.
Be a tab item number one, Mr. Nelson. Okay, we're talking about a piece of property at six forty-two West Fourth Street, and that's roughly a one point eight, one point eight-four acre, uh, piece of property. The property is zone B-two, uh, best we can tell from city records that property was first zoned for business, uh, back around nineteen eighty-seven. The, um, the applicant, as you've heard described, is asking for a rezoning to T-two, which allows for both site-built housing and, um, and mobile homes on the same lot. It is a, we have three mobile home classifications. Under our zoning, we have T-one, which is kinda like new moon subdivision, which allows, um, mobile home units on a, on a, single unit on a single lot. And then we have T-two, which is, allows for a mixture, and, uh, really allows for just mobile homes to be on the same lot as site-built, and then you have, uh, T-three, which is more of the formalized park. The applicant is, is here is requesting kind of a, a change in zoning, which would allow them to, to have a layout that they've had in the past. Now, that's where, uh, history gets a little difficult to decipher, as far as, um, talking with the property owners. It, it appears, and basically looking at, um, aerial photography from a good while back, there have been, um, mobile homes on, on this property, at least since we started taking aerial photographs in two thousand. Uh, they weren't present when we had aerial photography taken back in the mid-eighties. So somewhere in there, uh, mobile homes were allowed on the property. We have, um, looked and looked for variances that would allow that, a rezoning of this property, and, uh, did not find that. Uh, we did, of course, find where the property was, was zoned along with many of the adjacent properties to B-two. As far as interpretation, zoning ordinance, and why that might have been allowed, I can't tell you that, I don't have history. Now, there was a permit allowed for replacement of one of those units, um, back a couple of years ago, and I think Dallas, they may have handed you the ticket, which I don't have the date on that.
Nine, I guess that is, two thousand nine. Two thousand nine.
And I, I just have to say that that was, um, erroneous, as far as allowing that to go in there. And, um, I don't have the staff present to ask that question of why that was allowed, but, what we're trying to do at this point is to make sure if they're requesting that, then that they have the proper zoning for that. It, I mean, your, your ordinance states that if you have a, a non-conforming mobile home, that it cannot be replaced, uh, if it's not allowed in that district. So, in, in this case, if they were to pull a mobile home out of there, then it should not be legally replaced. Uh, there are options that they can, can follow for what they have in mind here. One is this rezoning that's being requested. The other is to, to ask for a variance from the board of zoning adjustment. That option is certainly still available to them, no matter what, um, happens with this zoning request. Uh, we, it, it was my advice to them that they seek this rezoning, uh, because, uh, we have, we have not had much, uh, or applicants have not had much success in, in obtaining a variance for the type of use that they're talking about. Again, that option would still be there for them if this, if this rezoning request is not successful. If you're looking at the area around the, um, subject property, and you can see that on the zoning map, you have a, on the north side of Fourth Street, and certainly along Allenville Road, you have a, a, a true mixture of zoning. You have, at the intersection of West Fourth and Allenville Road, you have a, 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 a T-two zoning. You have, um, T-two, which exists just down the road from this piece of property. You have one on the backside on Allenville, have a couple of others on Allenville Road. Uh, you have some, even T-three zoning, which would allow for mobile home parks, where on a, on a vacant piece of property that was not, um, was not built, but that option is there for the owner of that property. I point that out to, to essentially say that, um, the use of mobile homes and the development of, of property using a mixture of site-built and mobile homes is, is not out of character for this neighborhood. And it seems to be, uh, generally accepted to some extent.
It's on, um, across the street from them, five, five-nine and five, looks like five-nine, five-nine-nine. Uh, might be five-four-seven, are the long skinny things manufactured homes and?
Yes, sir, that's correct, and there are a number of variances also up and down, uh, this area of West Fourth Street that have been granted over the years.
Okay. So, so there, I, I'm counting on, across the street from them, there's, looks like there's one, two, three, four, maybe five lots or so that have, um, manufactured homes on them.
The, the other, uh, point that I would make in this case is that, uh, manufactured housing is still basically single-family housing. We're not talking about a multi-family setup, and we're talking about densities that are, are pretty low. Uh, the other, uh, point that I would make in the case of this B-two zoning that was initially set in nineteen eighty-seven is, and I'm, this is pure conjecture on my part, but it, it is generally, was practice at the time, and, um, basically in, in, in planning and zoning, uh, policy was to look at where you expected to see some type of growth. And if you were just looking at, uh, a transportation map, where major roads came together and, um, thinking about growth in the future, you might consider, um, where Allenville Road and Fourth Street come together to be a, a point where you call and know that you might wanna encourage some, some commercial. Generally today, we would kind of hold off and not zone, and kind of hold it in a, in a much, uh, lesser density zoning. But the practice at, at that time was to really go ahead and zone it. And we have a couple of places around town that have been treated that way, that is the reason that I suggest that might have been the case. Another, a good example of that same policy was Gillespie and Newton Street, just south of, of the hospital. That's a, essentially a residential area that was, zoning at the time has changed to, to B-two.
Mm-hmm.
Anticipating that might change over. Well, here we are, uh, thirty years later, and that hasn't happened. So, that's not necessarily the best way to approach it.
No.
What you end up with, I'm, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead, go ahead.
What you end up with, when you do that, is, uh, allowing by our right uses that might not be really compatible with what is still the predominant use in the area. What we have here, predominant use is residential, and appears to continue to be for a long time. This, this B-two that we're, we're looking at is probably not the best zoning for this piece of property. So, from that standpoint, changing it to something that is a little more compatible with the neighborhood is, is probably, uh, a benefit. Now, whether that should be T-two or some other residential zoning, that's, that's a question. But leaving it as B-two is, is allowing by our right something that would, and what I mean by right is just simply coming and asking for a building permit. There's no other public hearing process, there's no.
What all could somebody put there as B-two? Oil, gas station, oil change, um, without having to seek permission from anybody? If they said, okay, then we're just gonna sell it to, and pu- and they can put up a oil change place or a gas station or a used car lot, or what all can you put there if it's B-two? So they know, so everybody knows.
That, that's pretty much, it's just about any business that is allowed in the city.
Okay.
Now, um, the likelihood of somebody doing that without the market changing i- is probably not that great. But it is an allowed use in that location.
Mm-hmm.
Be glad to answer any questions at this point.
Anybody have any questions? Yes, sir. You go right ahead.
All right, I, I, I guess I suspect that this is really a BZA deal, and, but I know your judgment is this is the way to go. And I'd be tempted, if I were Ms. Bailey after this, I'd come see you and I'd say, well, I want my lot zoned R-four, or R-three, or something like that. And I, I guess I'd struggle with it because of that reason. How do you, maybe, and maybe we oughta do all of this at one time instead of a lot, and I don't know. I, I know we, we got a quandary, and these folks need help, and it's not different from what's been there, no big deal from that perspective. How do we, how do you fix it? And I, my, my guess is a BZA is better, fix it than this is, but.
That's not.
I know your judgment's different from that, too.
My, my judgment at the moment is, is colored by, uh, basically events that have taken place with BZA in the last year, which we don't get into here, but, uh, that might be a, might have been a better forum for this individual concern, which could have been determined to be a hardship.
Well, I'll get you a second.
But i- if you're looking at what the, uh, ARANS have as far as the, the configuration of having had three units there and the possibility of replacing those, then that would be a BZA trip each time. And so what we're really looking to do is to make, to make legal what is already in place and has been in place in some way. And I can't tell you how the trailers got there originally, I can tell you that the, the most recent replacement was approved by, was approved by my office, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you it wasn't. I did not make the approval, but I can't, and I can't tell you why exactly it was approved.
Okay, this.
It should not have been approved, it was an error.
Okay.
And we cannot, I cannot go forward and create another error with another replacement.
Okay. This rezoning request is for this lot and this lot alone?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's exactly right.
So if somebody else wants to change theirs to do this, they got to go through this same process?
Yes, sir, that's correct, uh, there, and I like, uh, Ms. Bailey, who came before you. Ms. Bailey has a, a variance to allow for the double Y that is on the property that I think she shares ownership with her, with her relative. We just have to look at each individual case here, we're trying to, to deal with this question initially.
I, I, and I think I know the answer to this, but it's, there's no way to take the zoning request and stipulate, okay, it's T-two, but can't put more than three trailers there, but I think I know the answer to that, but, but is that doable?
Uh, conditional zoning is not advised, but it is not unheard of.
Speak up if you're.
Sorry. Conditional zoning is not something that I would recommend that this planning commission make as a matter of policy. If you're looking for some type of conditional setup, that's, that's more of a, a board of zoning adjustment question. What, what you get into here is that you have zones that are basically applied across the board, and what you'd be looking at is whether or not somebody considers that to be, um, applying a higher standard. Now, sometimes those, those conditions have been offered by the applicant, but for you to put them on, or the city council to put them on there, that's different. And there is some strong argument about even if it's offered by the applicant, whether or not it's enforceable, meaning that it's a, and I'm, I'm just laying it out, is if it's T-two and they say it, during their approval process, we agreed to do this, there's some argument that that might not even be enforceable if they were to sell the property and the next person doesn't agree to that.
That was.
He asked a question, basically, if there's a way we could put some kind of restriction on, just to get the ball down the road.
Yeah, and I figured it would.
To, to, to further that conversation, I don't, I don't really think the applicants have anything in mind other than what is been presented to you.
Mm-hmm.
But again, as I always do with zoning, I caution that you're, you're granting a zone which has a life beyond it, of the property owner. Uh, it's just like the T-two, the, excuse me, the B, excuse me, the B-two that we're talking about here. That was applied years ago and is still there, and is still available for the property owner to use for whatever was allowed by our right in a B-two. If you put T-two on this property, the same thing is gonna be the case there. Now, the question, I think for y'all, is to decide whether or not that is an inappropriate zoning for this district, given the predominant land use that's out there.
Okay, now, um, just so everybody understands also, if we vote affirmative and we, 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 we vote for this, then it goes before the city council in a month or in, um, the, six weeks or, or next, next month? Or when, when would, go before the city council?
The rezoning, what you're making is a recommendation.
Correct.
And your recommendation, uh, can be used by the city council or it can be completely discarded. All that's required by state laws is that, that it come before you, uh, you hear the case and you make a recommendation to the city council. So, in practical terms, what happens here is that if you deal with it today, either a recommendation for or against it, or even some kind of modification, your recommendation can include some modification if you see fit. Then it goes to the city council, city council will then hear it on their next available agenda to set a public hearing, and then it will lay over for roughly a month.
Okay.
And then they will have a public hearing at that meeting which was set, and then they, they, they will deal with it. They can take your recommendation, they can substitute their own. Uh, if they make a radical change, just from what is requested, then it goes back through another public hearing.
So regardless of our vote, it will, it's going to go before the city council at some point?
City council is the final say on what happens here.
Absolutely, all that. Any other questions? Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I'll turn them on.
Can you explain to us, when it does go change into a trailer park, if it changes into a trailer park stipulation, what are the requirements, are there additional requirements?
There are. I'm not completely prepared for that request, but I can look it up real quick.
When you look at it, I would say, I mean, is there any way to guesstimate potentially how many sites might be available on this one point eight acre?
I- if, if you take, and I'm just, and this, again, I'm, this is rough, and it can be, if we were to take a site plan and, and come up with exactly what's here, um, you're, you're gonna have to reconfigure this property. Uh, the site-built house, the way it's configured, and then right there, if you're looking at the, at the aerial photograph where it says six forty-two, that is a, that's basically a pool, okay?
That's a what?
Swimming pool, an in-ground swimming pool. And so, behind that, you have an area that could easily be converted to, for mobile home. And I would say that given the space requirements for mobile homes in our ordinance, that you'd be, uh, looking at about one more unit beside what they're requesting, without coming in and removing the in-ground pool and removing the house from the site. And that's not to say they couldn't do that. So the, the, the difficulty in converting that is, um, a little more than taking a, a vacant piece of property. If you, if you look at your zoning map, you've got a piece of property at five fifty-eight, uh, which is, uh, right now has a barn on it, and it's a vacant piece of property. That could accommodate, I think the design that was initially laid out for us there was, um, about thirty units. This, this piece of property is much smaller than that, and again, we would have to, if you, if you develop a mobile home park, then you have to essentially come back and provide us with details like you would a commercial piece of property. And provide sufficient space. So I, I can't tell you exactly, Mayor, I apologize, I'd be more than happy to, to work that out.
Please, please.
I, I know now, if it goes into a trailer park stipulation, concrete padding and, and, I mean, there's a lot more that you can't just pull a trailer up there.
Yes, sir, you can't, if you.
I mean, I've been out here on the site, and, um, do you know if there's gonna be additional things they're gonna have to do before they pull a, a trailer in here?
Uh, we, we'd have to look, there may be, what's required may already be there. I have not been inspected each individual spot, but they would have to provide at least a concrete pad, they'd have to tie it down. There probably have to be a, a sewer lateral if there's not one to connect to this property, because they're within sufficient distance for sanitary sewer. So, um, those are the basic requirements.
And, uh, and since you brought it up, that's sort of my next question. I mean, uh, are you guys in the city sewer system now? Have you set your family?
Cities sewer.
City sewer system, so you have a regular lateral with two bath? But they, it may or may not have been put in to code along the sewer system. Sir? But have, you know, the question is have they been brought up to code on that? So actually, I, I have a few more questions up here.
Absolutely.
I, I almost would like just to, uh, well, I guess I'm considering right now, I might need more information.
Okay. Well, once we read it in, we might put in to, to suspend it, I guess. That would be at the time. Was that correct? We have not read this in yet, so.
Yes, sir. I would, uh, if you're going to do that, certainly recommend that you appoint a committee to look at any questions that are outstanding. And of course, try to make sure that it's clear to the public when this might come back up before you.
Okay. Do we need to read it in or do we need to, um?
You absolutely need to read it.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead and, uh, would you please read that in for, uh, anybody more questions for Mr. Duke? Before, okay, can you read it? Go ahead.
Resolution zoning request from B two to T two, six forty-two West Fourth Street, Burrell and Melbogene A-Rant petitioners, July twenty-first, two thousand sixteen, whereas Burrell and Melbogene A-Rant have submitted a request zone the property in attachment A and whereas the subject property is located inside the city limits and whereas the petitioner wishes to rezone the property from B two general business to T two mobile home parks and whereas a public hearing on the proposed zoning was held by the Prattville Planning Commission on July twenty-first, two thousand sixteen. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby recommends that the rezoning of said property from B two to T two. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Is there any other discussion on this or is there any action that was, somebody wishes to take on this particular matter? Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor.
The motion that we tabled this.
We tabled the resolution. There's a motion that we table the resolution and form a committee, I would imagine also on this. Is there a, uh, is there a second on that motion? All right. The mayor has seconded that motion. Um, all in favor of tabling this, it was indicated by your right hand. Do you want to read? Do you? Okay. All opposed to tabling it. And I, I, I guess I didn't really vote. I'm kind of, does, is it, is it tabled whether I vote yeah or no or what's the, I guess it's tabled. It's four to.
I believe it's two.
Four to two. Okay. Uh, mine does not matter. All right. Those that wish to serve on a committee for me, Matt, Mr. Mayor, you said you wanted more information. Would you be willing to be on a committee?
Don't do that.
I won't do that. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, Dallas, would you, would you, would you, can? All right. I'll, I'll do it, but unless you just want to, you can't. Okay. We've got three people that are going to be on that committee. Do you have, um, you want to be there? I can be an alternate if I'm needed if we have to have three people. So you, we've got, um, Ms. Morgan, do you have the three people that are going to be on the committee? Um, it's going to be, um, um, Mr. Hyman, um, Ms. McCauley and, um, Dallas. Chief, Chief Dallas Johnson. All right. And if I'm needed, I will be there, as the mayor. Okay, let's move on to the next. Ladies and gentlemen, what we're going to do is we have tabled this and we're going to have a committee. And that, that committee is going to meet in the next, um, week or two and Joel is going to announce that and it will be a public hearing and it will probably be a, or, excuse me, it will be a public meeting. I said that wrong. It will be a, you, it will be open to the public. It will probably be in the conference room across the street at that building and we're going to gather more information and we would love for y'all to be there and anybody else that wishes to attend the meeting, it will be there. And it's going to be brought up at our next meeting, um, in, um, August. Okay? And it's going to be before August. It'll probably be, since there's only four weeks before the next meeting, it'll probably be a week or two from now and it will be announced and, um, you can check with Mr. Duke or check on the city um, page and, and there will be some type of announcement of, of it, but y'all will be notified. Okay? Now, the next, next meeting, next thing on the agenda is, um, zoning from R two to O one at eleven forty-five East Main Street, um. Yes, sir. I know we've got a public hearing first. I'm sorry. I'm ju, I'm ju, I'm putting the cart before the horse. Um, I apologize. It is a public hearing on this matter. Would anybody like to speak on this particular matter? Okay. For or against or tell us what's going on. Come on over here and we all know who you are, but you have to sign it. Yes, ma'am. At this time, yes, ma'am. Thank you for coming and that you will be to, Mr. Duke will get in touch with you and let you know when we're going to have that, that, um, that subcommittee meeting. Okay? Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Bo Evans. I'm the owner of Bo Evans Realty here in town. My office is next door to this lovely place. About two and a half months ago, we had the opportunity to acquire the, the house next to us that had been used as residential forever. Uh, and our, our, obviously our office is currently zoned O one, I think it is. And we would like to have this, um, the same as well. Um, I'm sorry.
You gotta speak up, Mr. Evans. But you can't hear you.
About two months ago, we had the opportunity to acquire the house that was next to our office on East Main Street. Our office is at eleven thirty-seven East Main, um, and we have a desire to change the zoning to O one as is our office to make it more consistent so we could use it for office space that we need to.
Okay. All right. Any questions from Mr. Evans? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Evans. All right. Anybody want to speak for or against this? Come on up and sign in and let us know who you are. All right. Tell us who you are.
I'm Betty Savage.
Yes, Ms. Savage.
I own the property at eleven fifty-five East Main Street, the corner of East Main and Curlin Street.
Yes, ma'am.
And I rent my house. At the time, Bo Evans Realty owned or rented the house that is next door to the house at eleven fifty-five East Main Street. The front yard was a mess.
Yes, ma'am.
They dug up the yard. They put in what looked like automobile tires and it was a mess. They did later put down some slag, which was an improvement. I think parking in the front of this house will be very difficult. It is a very small yard. They, you could stand in my backyard, in my rental backyard and see the trash that was piled up in the back of their house. Now, this is a house, not the one that we're talking about rezoning, but the one that they were in at that time. I had to put up a six-foot privacy fence across my backyard so that my renters wouldn't have to look at the mess up there in their backyard. My reason for saying all this is that if they aren't going to treat this new property that they've acquired for, for an office, if they aren't going to treat it any better than they did the, the property that they, uh, have now, then I don't think that, uh, it should be rezoned. I'm against the rezoning. I'm also wondering if there could be some way to have restrictions on the type of driveways, yards or what have you for these businesses that keep popping up on East Main Street. I keep the yard at my rental house in very good condition. I have yard service on a regular basis. So the main thing I'm saying is that that they have a, they had a messy place. Now, they did clean it up a little bit because they had bought this other house and of course they wanted to rezonate and all that good stuff. So right now it looks a little bit better. But I still say I'm against the rezoning.
Okay.
Can y'all answer a question for me? I bet the mayor can.
Yes, ma'am. With us, mate.
Will there be curving all the way down the street to Curlin Street?
You can ask it.
Uh, uh, yeah.
Uh, I think that project ends where it is now on that side. Now, on the other side, we are planning on putting some hyping around the transformer, uh, transformer station.
Yeah. So that it won't go down as far as my rental house.
I don't really think that it would because of, uh, the, the height of the asphalt and the, and the level of the, of the yards. Because the curb is, is tall and I, I really don't see that.
I just wondered. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm Bob Savage, Robert Savage.
Yes, sir, Ms. Savage.
We've noticed since we got the notification on this meeting that we drive back and forth to see that the house next door, the, the lot in the front is very small.
Yes, sir.
So I don't know, and I think the mayor just answered the question though on the curving. Uh, we, we had the impression that the curving was going to go all the way down to catch, the curving start coming from the other's end. It's going to match.
It's like on that side of the, uh, there's a barrier up there.
A curving or it's where that, where you're saying at, um, am I at the wrong spot?
See, they're within two blocks now with the curving on Curlin Street.
Yes.
It appears that if they were going on down with it, and if that would be the case, that they would, there wouldn't be room in, in, if they rezoned that house next door for any parking. But we've noticed now that people are parking in the yard. I don't know who they are, but there's pickup trucks there and vehicles parked in the front yard. But if there was a curb there, there'd be, there'd be no space there for.
Okay. So you're concerned about access, uh, uh, multiple points of access from the, from the property onto, um, that's a, that's a good concern. The multiple points of access. Okay?
So that it's a very small yard that they're wanting to rezonate.
Yes, sir.
And would not, would not appear to me that would have sufficient space for parking.
Okay.
Are you talking, I'm sorry.
No, no.
Just in the front alone or running back?
Or you can't get to the back. I don't think, well, I don't know if there'd be access to the back or not.
I guess if they own both houses, they might be able to put a road there. I don't know. We will find out if that's his intention. Um, but I'll, I will, I will find that out.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Any other people for or against? I'll give you one second, Mr. Evans. Uh, any other, all right, Ms. Evans, you can come and re, readdress us, sir. Yes, sir, Ms. Evans.
I'm sorry. As far as parking, um, well, first of all, we've had some construction going on at our office that was, the, the trash was a result of that. It's gone now. We're still going a little bit, but, um, obviously we've got it cleaned up. It had nothing to do with this hearing, so, um, there's a fence separating where we're at now and this place that we're taking down. Uh, our intent somewhere in the future is to put slag or pavement or something like that for parking in the rear. Uh, there's plenty of space there. Right now, he's, all right, you can't get to it. You can get to the backyard of this one or the backyard of my office, but not both of them because of the fence, but it'll probably be down in a week or so.
Are you planning on putting a road in between the two houses and, and going back there or how you get to that?
There's space between the two houses.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah. I mean, there's space between, there's a fence that separates them. So you can't get to it. You can't get to it right now.
I see. You're going to put a driveway between them. Okay. That's what I'm saying. Yeah. Got you. Okay. And, um, all right. Any other questions for, for Mr. Evans? Thank you, Mr. Evans. All right. Mr. Duke, do you have anything to say about this matter? Uh, I guess the public hearing portion of this meeting is closed.
Yes, sir. I can make comments now or wait until you read it in, but I, either way.
Either one. You want to read, let's just read it in. We'll, uh, will you go ahead and read it in, Mr. Evans?
It's the top.
Top.
This is number two at the top.
Number two. Number two. Yeah, okay.
Whereas Clarence and Telma Evans have submitted a request on the property in attachment A.
Turn your mic off.
It's not working. Yeah.
Whereas the subject property is located inside the city limits and whereas the petitioner wishes to rezone the property from R two Office District and whereas a public hearing on the proposed zoning was held by the Prattville Planning Commission on July twenty-first, two thousand sixteen, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby recommends the rezoning of said property from R two to O one. All right, second. All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Now, Mr. Duke.
Mr. Duke, can you tell us a little bit about what, what this is or your, the city's opinion?
Yes, sir. You, you're looking at the rezoning of, uh, property that was originally developed as, as residential at eleven forty-five East Main Street. That's roughly a parcel, is roughly a quarter acre. It can size the, the structure there according to the county revenue office dates from about nineteen sixty-two. The property you can see is, um, one of three properties in that block between, of East Main Street, between Wingard Street and Curlin Street that is still zoned as, as R two. If you, those of you who've been on the commission for a while, you know that there's been a, a, a steady uh, request for rezoning of these properties to some type of, uh, commercial. And, uh, you may have read in the staff report where we talked about in, in roughly nineteen ninety-six, you were seeing, uh, pressure to, to see all of these properties go with something more like B two, um, because the thinking was naturally is road frontage ought to be, ought to be commercial. And I, to some extent, that is, um, probably true of these properties, but the, the, the feeling of the planning commission at the time and it's pretty well adopted by the city council was to, to limit that, um, commercial to something that is a little more, a little less intense, something that is palatable for the, the surrounding neighborhoods because if you, if you take a look at, let's use a zoning map instead of the aerial. What we have north and south in these areas is we have generally healthy residential neighborhoods. They're definitely older. I mean, most of these areas date from the late fifties, early sixties. But we have, um, residential properties that have consistently kept their value. But we have, um, residential properties that have consistently kept their value and it turned over from generation to generation. So the thinking was the properties along Main Street, by and large, are going to continue to see pressure to go to something else besides residential. And you can see that we, we've seen that happen with a number of these properties is that they, they, if they have a inhabitant, they stay pretty well kept up. Once they go vacant, or once they go rental, they tend to start declining. Various reasons, road noise, difficulty getting in and out of these properties can make it less desirable for residential. So the, the O1, though, was a, a way to recognize that these are small lots, that it's, they're not well set up for intense uses. And an intense use would be very close to the back line of some of these properties, say on, on Gaddis Avenue or let's come down to the south side, Duramus and Falk Avenue, that there needed to be some way to, to manage that. The, the rule of thumb that was set up by the planning commission is that we consider rezoning on the south side up to about Duramus Street, on the north side up to about Curly Street. Those were good brake lines. So that has been the predominant zoning. What, um, what you haven't seen, and which I expect to see in the second generation of, of commercial properties, is that some of these residential structures get knocked down, uh, because they're not, the way they're configured on the lot is not well set up for a good many of the reasons that you've heard discussed here. They're, they're generally somewhere between twenty-five, thirty-five foot setback. As Main Street has gotten wider, that's closer to the road. That's not a, a good bit of space for parking, accommodating modern requirements for, for parking. A lot of the space that's on these properties is in the backyard, which is not generally where people want to put their parking, except for employee parking. So, uh, the lots that have done well are generally the ones on the corner, the ones mid-block. Probably over time going to have to be removed and taken out. We're, we're looking at a proposal where one of these that was converted closer to Peachtree is about to be converted to a modern office. So you will see that a- as time goes along, we believe. So the, the pattern that's being requested, or the O1 that's being requested, is generally within the pattern that's been established through this area over the last two decades. Any proposed use of these properties would have to meet individual site plan requirements. As y'all know, what we look at here is you have a, a zoning of the property which allows a use. And then there is a development plan which is brought before us. If it's an existing structure, they have to meet basic requirements. If it's a redevelopment, they have to meet a higher standard, um, based on the, on the new site. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Yes, sir. Does the parking have been brought up? I mean, is, if this does get rezoned, will it meet stipulations for parking?
It will have to. They will have to show us where their parking is going to be placed. They'll have to show us that they have access to that. I'll be honest with you, as long as these two lots are in common ownership, they probably can meet that. In single ownership, that one lot would have trouble. What that means is, is if you can, if you can only produce two or three parking spaces, then the, the use that's in, that goes in that biz building is going to be somewhat limited. I mean, we, we have some that are pretty, pretty low, which, you know, a single accountant or an attorney or some office use like that might could be accommodated there, but we'd have to look at it. Mr. Evans' office is currently, uh, working through a, a an addition where part of the requirement is that they provide additional parking. So we're looking for that to be provided on, on that lot at eleven thirty-seven. The same would be true here for eleven forty-five, the one that's under consideration. If that gets rezoned and they convert it to a commercial use, they're going to have to provide parking sufficient to, to meet city standards.
Any other questions? All right, discussion. Thank you, Mr. Duke. Discussion?
Anybody want to talk about? A little bit.
All right. Call the question. All in favor of the, um, all in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. All right. It has passed. It will go before the city council in August?
It should appear on their agenda the first meeting in August. Should I have any trouble getting a sponsor for that? And then it will uh, be read first time, public hearing set, and will show up for, for hearing and consideration on their first meeting in September. And I'm sorry, I don't have those dates. I can get those real quick.
No, that's fine.
Be the first Tuesday in September.
First Tuesday in September. It's going to go before the city council. We're just a recommenda- recommending body and the city council votes on this issue. And so there will be an announcement and if you look on the, the, the city webpage, it will be there. But it will come before the city council and it will be a public hearing for the city council as well. Okay? And so it's our, we're just a recommending body. The, the ones that have the real power will vote on it, um, shortly. All right? Our next item, you want, you may need to take a break, but we, we got one. Okay. We're good? All right, let's go on and what's, it, it's a public hearing, if I'm not mistaken. It is a public hearing. It has to do with R5 Patio Garden Homes to R3 Residential in the Glenbrook subdivision. Um, is anybody here to speak for or against? I think that there's somebody for. Come on forward and tell us who you are. The public hearing is hereby closed. Uh, unless you want to talk for it.
You can only speculate.
All right. Come on, tell us.
Don't know if this one has confused anybody at all, but under our original, um, master plan, there was some R5 zero lot line patio garden homes planned for this area. And we have since then turned away from that model and gone to standard single family like the remainder of Glenbrook subdivision, which is the final plot on the agenda shortly thereafter. Um, this is simply a, uh, really a cleanup item to make sure that the lots that we have constructed, that the zoning is minimal to conform to those, to the lots that we actually built.
Okay, and this is Glenbrook Phase Four and it's let's see, where is, where is it on Glenbrook?
It's always which lots you're talking about. I think I know, but.
It's the final plan that, that's before you today. It's originally, this line right here was going to be zero lot line, small patio garden homes.
Okay.
Y'all have any? We're on the intermurdened.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, there it is. Okay. Yeah. All right. Any questions from Mr. Rice?
Greg didn't get a chance to speak against him.
Greg, you want to speak against him?
I'm holding back.
All right. There's a zoning request for R5 to R3 Glenbrook subdivision Phase Four, SMB Land LLC petitioner, July twenty-first, two thousand sixteen, whereas SMB Land LLC has submitted a request to zone the property in attachment A and whereas the subject property is located inside the city limits and whereas the petitioner wishes to rezone the property from R5 to Patio Garden Homes to R3, single-family residence. And whereas a public hearing on the proposed zoning was held by the Prattville Planning Commission on July twenty-first, two thousand sixteen, therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby recommends the rezoning of said property from R5 to R3? Know if I could read that in, but, uh, I can't.
You can, but you can't make a motion.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
All right. Is there a second? Thank you. I figured I wouldn't make everybody read them in. I've had everybody read them in, so I've given you a chance. All right. There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign. Let's read in the, the next one. I will let.
It's a public hearing, too.
This is a public hearing? We do. It is a public hearing. It doesn't show public hearing. Well, it's a public hearing. It's open. Any discussion? Closed. All right, item four, would you like to read it in, Mr. Nelson? Bobby? Item four, you want to read it in for us?
Item four.
Yes, sir.
Resolution preliminary plat, Glenbrook subdivision plat four C, July the twenty-first, two thousand sixteen. Whereas SMB, SMB Lands LLC is the developer of Glenbrook subdivision Phase four C. And whereas the proposed development is located inside the city limits and the end of Barkley Street and the Campbell Street. And whereas the initial sketch plan was approved on May the sixteenth, two thousand thirteen, as Glenbrook subdivision Phase three and six endorsed the alignment plan of Old Ridge Road. Whereas a revised sketch plan was approved for the development on September the eighteenth, two thousand fourteen. And whereas a revised sketch plan was approved for the development on March nineteenth, two thousand fifteen. And whereas the preliminary plat was approved for the development on April the sixteenth, two thousand fifteen. And whereas the development was proposed, has proposed a revision of preliminary plat approved on April the sixteenth, two thousand fifteen, impacting more than ten lots. And whereas a public hearing for the proposed preliminary plat was heard on July the twenty-first, two thousand sixteen. And whereas the city department heads have reviewed and commented on the proposed development. Now therefore be it resolved, the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives its favorable review of submitted preliminary plat of Glenbrook subdivision Phase four C.
Is there a second?
All right.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign. All right.
Done.
Next, Oaks of Buena Vista, plat number five. It is a final plat. There's a resolution. Did I skip one? I thought that was what he just did. Was that number five? Number final plat. Will you read it in?
I will.
Thank you.
Resolution final plat. Glenbrook subdivision plat four C, July twenty-first, two thousand sixteen. Whereas SMB Lands LLC is the developer of Glenbrook subdivision Phase four C. And whereas the proposed development is located inside the city limits, Barkley Street and Campbell Street. And whereas the initial sketch plan was approved on May sixteen, two thousand thirteen, as Glenbrook subdivision Phase three and six endorsing the realignment plan of Old Ridge Road. And whereas a revised sketch plan was approved for the development on September eighteen, two thousand fourteen. And whereas a revised sketch plan was approved for the development on March nineteenth, two thousand fifteen. And whereas the preliminary plat was approved for the development on April sixteen, two thousand fifteen. Whereas a preliminary plat was approved for the proposed development on July twenty-one, two thousand sixteen. Whereas the city department heads have reviewed and commented on the proposed development. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives its favorable review of submitted final plat of Glenbrook subdivision Phase four C. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign. It has passed, Mr. Rice.
We need to have him burst next time.
Yes, I'm, uh, um.
We've got to do this.
I close the public hearing. All right, uh, Oaks of Buena Vista.
Can I, can I ask, this is a, this is a just personal interest question. What's next for y'all?
Uh, next month you'll see preliminary plat on the Ridge and Pratt Farms.
Okay, I mean, like I said, I'm just curious.
Next month you'll see preliminary plat for the Ridge and Pratt Farms, um, which is the one we got sketch plan for a couple of months ago across Old Ridge Road. And then we are diligently trying to move forward with, um, Glenbrook Phase Five.
All right.
So we're, we're, we're ready, but running through a little bit of a stumbling block with the annexation moratorium right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, will you read in number six for our resolution final plat, Oaks of Buena Vista, plat five? That's under, this is number six tab. Mr. May? Uh, can you read that?
Resolution final plat, Oaks of Buena Vista, plat five. Whereas the Oaks of Buena Vista LLC is owner of the Oaks of Buena Vista plat five and whereas the proposed development is located inside the city limits of Buena Vista Boulevard. Whereas the sketch plan proposed development proposed in Phase Five, two thousand and six. Whereas preliminary plat approved for the proposed development on June eighteenth, two thousand fifteen. And whereas required city department to review and comment on the proposed final plat. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives its favorable review of the final plat of the Oaks of Buena Vista plat five, Mr. President. I'm so moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there any, um, well, would you like to tell us about it while we go on?
Since you brought your drawing, I can read it.
This is plat five. It's the connection of, of Buena Vista Boulevard and Cotton Blossom to make a complete loop around the fire department. I assume this makes them very happy. Stretch of pace, sidewalk trend, power line is probably eighty percent complete in the ground. And we're ready to roll.
All right.
Ready to go.
Sounds great. Thank you, sir. Any other questions for Mr. Gil? All right. All in favor, right hand. All opposed, like sign. Next item on the agenda is a replat on Two Street in Fairview Avenue. And it appears that it is, um, well, tell us about it, Mr. Duke. Thank you.
Mr. You have a request by the property owner of lots, um, four and five of the North Preston Heights plat three subdivision. That corresponds to, I apologize, one oh one, two court and three oh three Fairview Avenue. Uh, the owner is requesting that these two lots be replatted into one lot. Uh, if you can see on the aerial photograph, three oh three Fairview Avenue was a burned structure that has been removed from the lot. The owner of one oh one has obtained that lot and is asking that they be replatted together to make a single residential lot.
It's Two Street and one oh one. Okay. Yeah, it's right there on Fairview.
Everybody clear on that?
And they all just have them in the big backyard. That's two court.
Right. And, and one of the, uh, things I'll point out is that, uh, the Fairview Avenue, excuse me, the two court lot, the house is turned at, in an angle which creates some, uh, rear yard. Our, our ordinance standards are set up as if everything is put on a nice rectangular lot. So the rear yard on, on lot, on one oh one, two court is basically, if you were to draw a line across the back of the house and extend that, everything beyond that is called rear yard. So it currently has a pretty short rear yard.
Okay.
And so this would help, certainly help that lot.
Okay.
I, you know, I say this is fine until his grandson comes along in fifteen years and wants to sell the lot and then we'll undo it.
Yeah. All right. Any discussion? Any question? All in favor signify by raising your right hand?
We have a motion. You got.
Oh, we got a motion. All right, can I have a motion?
Okay, Dallas made the motion that we approve this proposed. I second.
All in favor, right hand? Opposed? Mr. Duke, do you have anything else for us?
No, sir.
Dejourned.